We guys chatting about today, everything, all the money, I guess, everything, right? IP man.
As soon as you leave.
All those big numbers, holy cow.
Yeah, they keep getting bigger and bigger.
You should be joining us. Yeah, if it's just gonna be Andy, I don't know if anybody else is gonna get in, but if somebody does like pop in the waiting rooms.
Okay, at least I know because then we can only have three people here, so I think Mike Woodburn was gonna come anyway, the doctor's appointment, but he was gonna come and then maybe you have forty-five minutes.
My god, forty minutes on this, right?
Well, I think it was a paid one, I think they they borrowed it from D O five, so that's another thing, but we need money for Zoom and everything like that, what we got on three sixty-five, and we have Microsoft Teams already built in. Um, yeah, so this is one of the core, so it's recording, but this is unlimited, so you could be here for ten hours on the deal.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
But nice chat with you, thanks, man, see you later. It becomes, it's two.
Oh, that's three already, Andy wanted to use it.
Oh, there we go. Chris comes in, I'm gone. The whole thing's bad, Mr. Stone, you can't complain. You know? Just trying to, just trying to. Figure this out, we'll have a. A good, uh. Great pursuit budget, everybody understands what the, what the deal is, and you know, we can. Get everybody on board, and that's that, right? It's the hope. You know, I was talking to Ryan about, you know, department, and people were talking about that department that's making sure they go with you guys.
I thought we mentioned that the last meeting, and um. I just don't think we be joining this director.
Well, it's gonna be directors, so. I don't know how we do if we.
I didn't ask who. You were the president.
Yeah, no, but I mean, does it, does it go to Joy first? Joy send it to you guys, and send it down to you, or does it go to you first, then to Joy, you know, I don't, I don't know what would be the best way to, to set the person, I mean, I would say, go see the auditor, let them figure it out, though, but not them figuring their.
No, yeah, we can work together.
Yeah, no, I get your research, work together on, well, you guys, you know, there's some options, and then, and then submit it to Joy.
Oh, that's good.
I don't have a lot of men.
Do you have to, if he doesn't?
What?
Join, Andy. Cause he was up there, and then he said.
We in here. Yeah, man, there you go. Hey, we just let you in, Andy. Okay, there you go.
Ian Harris.
Hey, Mike, how you doing? I can hear you. Happy anniversary, Red.
Oh, yeah, thanks.
I'm celebrating fifteen years of marriage today.
I thought then the anniversary, but it ended today, I wonder, you know?
That's why I say these, like, the opposite, man, it's like, dude, if you start at twenty twenty-five, and you've got twenty years to work, and you can retire at forty-five or fifty, it's like, that's crazy.
Probably collect.
They can collect that.
Yeah?
I think that was, well, I serve on a pension board, and I have guys that carry rebar for a living every day, I mean, they're, they're tore up, you know, and our pension can't, can't afford to give them thirty now. We have to do, now, once they get thirty, they get thirty, you know, plus they get sixty-two, they can, oh, there he is.
Are you doing, Andy?
I'm good. I thought I turned myself, right?
What?
Sorry.
These maids.
I'm back.
So, um, this is our group, I was gonna pick up, I was gonna pick up, um, Andy Vasquez, um, but it didn't get, uh. Proper notice, next week, we'll, we'll have proper notice.
It was, no.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll get that figured out, yeah, oversight, whatever, like, we'll get that figured out. We'll start group, this, this is the group for now, if someone comes in, I'll, I said, I'll leave, so.
You'll leave?
I'll leave. No, actually.
Oh, rock, paper, scissors, Jim. Shut TV off.
Yep. Well, but I thought we had a good meeting last week, talked about some things.
Last Thursday or last?
Last Thursday, about last Tuesday, no, that was, that was a good meeting, too, but, um, they're all good meetings, they're all good, they're all good meetings.
It's about every time is an opportunity.
Yep, I agree.
Did you get a copy of the minutes from our last meeting, Andy?
I did, I, I, I breezed through them, I haven't read through them in detail, but I did, yes, thank you.
So. Here, did you wanna start off with Ryan, or did you want me to just talk about how we talk about E nine one one and?
Well, I've got documentation for E nine one one, so I can hand it to you, and then give you some information, and then we can discuss it, you know, at the last meeting, I brought up the fact that they could have been a transfer or done an additional, so. First, I'm gonna give you documentation, because she had stated that there were certain areas that they could not use the surcharges for, and it's listed in there. Of things she can use and things she can't use it for. Almost everything on her list or in her budget can be taken out of surcharge, Ryan and I were talking, we don't wanna take everything out of foundation and transfer it over to surcharge, because it might start cutting her short. Okay, but there are things that we probably should address moving over this budget.
And so we're all aware that foundation is the money that comes from investment that flows down to the foundation fund, which, which, which is an E nine one one, some of the sheriffs, I believe, and maybe a, a, a.
Health, health insurance, things like that, yeah.
Some health insurance, different stuff like that.
So, yeah, after looking at the numbers, if we put everything that we thought originally into her surcharge, it would eat it all up in about, you know, seventy years. Where, what, if we move some of the things, like, you know, FICA, PERF.
Oh, we talked about, um, maybe the dues and subscriptions, contractual services, here's a list of the three different budgets that she has right now, of course, the first one is a surcharge, the second one is a donation fund, and the third is a foundation fund. I want you to pay particular attention to the, um, surcharge at the top. One thing that I want you to be aware of is that she had requested, um, to transfer seventy-five thousand dollars to overtime, which now her budget for overtime is two hundred thousand dollars. My concern is this, we have approximately forty-two positions available on the one forty-four, and thirty-six are filled, we usually have six to eight open positions in that budget. We do have, if you look at the bottom line underneath the surcharge, there was, uh, a balance of unexpended money is a four hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and eight dollars, and so. We need to keep a, here's the budget and the other information, just keep a close look as to what's going on there, um, here's the budget page, and underneath that are some, um, details, I, on personnel.
And can I, real quick, can I stop both of you two, Andy, just so you know, we're talking about E nine one one because she came in front of us, and, you know, it was eleven thousand dollar ask, I think, and then she wanted to transfer, she wanted an additional to the foundation. And I believe Karen said, hey, there might be some other things we can do, and so we table it till the next, you weren't at the meeting, so I just wanna give you an update. Yeah. So we, so we table it at the next meeting, I, I had talked to Debbie, and she's like, hey, is there something wrong, what's, you know, I said, no, I said, we're trying to do something this year, we're trying to look and. Put things in the spots that they're supposed to be in, and, and, and try not to do additionals if we can do transfers, so, believe it or not, Debbie Gunn ended up being a good test case for us, so, this is why, it's just not, nothing that she did, nothing that, you, you know, we're picking on her, it's just. This is the first thing that we saw, and we started digging into it, and it's like, okay.
I was just literally about to say, just so everyone is aware, this is what is occurring in a lot of different budgets.
So we're not picking on Debbie, it just, it just happened that she picked, I guess, the wrong time to ask for additional, and, oh, that's.
Well, I, I, again, I mean, it's, it, again, just like you said, it, it's kinda hard to give you an eleven, ten, five thousand dollar additional in the foundation fund, which is supposed to be used for, you know, more emergencies, more medical type things. When you're sitting on one point seven million dollars in your surcharge fund, it's, it's, it's hard to swallow that, and that's the kind of things that we're starting to look at, is while she has built it up, we also don't wanna eat all of it away right away, and, you know. Take it back on it, but if, you know, you can take some things on, and then say, over the next fifteen, twenty years, it kinda dwindles down, although I'm sure there'll be new monies down the pipeline at some point to offset that, but. You know, they also need to pay for what their stuff is, you know, even, and again, it. These are also things, to me, that. Always can be adjusted on a, you know, yearly basis, you know, you put it back in there for two, three years, you know, say it starts eating up way more than we thought, okay, then we can have some discussions down the road, but.
Mm-hmm.
I, you need to take on your burden, eat into some of your reserves before we start, you know. Tapping the general fund to every single time, or lift fund to every single time, or foundation fund every single time, like, it's just more for some of these departments to take on their actual burden, so.
Thank you guys for the explanation, it makes sense, I appreciate it.
Behind the one forty-four, I gave a report on all of the personnel, and the amounts they were making, um, fringe benefits, um, overtime, so you'd have all that information to support the one forty-four. I guess my only concern is if you start looking at the amount of money that was not spent in the, um, surcharge of four hundred and seventy thousand, um, and then start thinking about, we could probably move three to four hundred thousand from the. Foundation budget up to the surcharge, because we had already, uh, uh, associated four hundred and seventy thousand that was unexpended, we wouldn't be any worse off than we were previously. But yet we would free monies up in the foundation for whether it be the health insurance or things of that sort, and that's just one thing that we, we would like you to take in consideration.
If you do that. I'm sorry.
Now, what happens is, is this would be handled probably primarily during the budget, and we would make a recommendation to the budget, and then you did the budget, the council would have to decide how to handle it, if they wanted to go that route or not.
I'm sorry, what, Andy?
Uh, I was asking, so, so she has this extra money, that's because she hasn't hired those people, correct, do we also need to tell her she can not hire that many people if we're gonna lower that budget, don't we need to take that amount of people she's able to hire down as well?
Well, the numbers that we have total thirty-six people, um, what happens is, if you start, if you look at, not that you have the one forty-four, but if you look in the first class telecommunicator, you put twenty-eight individuals in there, and regularly, she only has approximately fourteen to sixteen. She is normally, cause I work on the payroll with our other, uh, individual, she is normally six to eight people short, and has been for the last couple of years, and that's because there's a, there's a big turnover.
Right, and that.
Two years that they have to work to get to first class, is that, is that, we're starting, that's top now?
The probation telecommunication is first, and then it goes to tier one, tier two, and then it goes to first class telecommunicator, and I don't know what the guidelines are.
Well, a lot of people.
Right, a lot of them aren't even staying that long. That's part of this situation where people are not staying, or they'll be there for a while, and then they find another job, and then they'll go part-time, but they won't stay on part-time.
Now, Andy, to your question, yes, you know, okay, what if all of a sudden, you know, everyone in the world wants to be a E nine one one communicator, and, you know, all of a sudden, there's forty-two, you know, people, or six more, seven more, eight more people out there that wanna come. Well, at that point, if you can prove that you actually need to do that, that's when you come in front of the council and say, you know, yeah, I guess, in my head, it's one of those things where you, you know, kinda either set it off in your head, like, you know, okay, she really does have six people to play with, we just don't budget for it. If she ever does hit those goals, then she can come back in front of you, ask, hey, look, I maintained the thirty-six, I'm really thinking I can maintain the thirty-eight, you know, now ask for two more people instead of us just budgeting for it every single year.
And tying up the money, the other thing to take in consideration is when she gets to that point, she adds it, you can reduce your, your overtime.
And I agree with that, I was just asking if we wanna bring that number down by four to six people, if they're not gonna hire those people, because by leaving it the way we did, or if we do leave it that way, and then take that money out, she could still put people in those positions without coming in front of us, because the money won't run out till later in the year. Am I correct? I mean, that, it's budgeted for it, so she'd be allowed to, right?
Uh, not normally, it's usually caught by a payroll department.
Okay, thank you, I didn't know that.
Probably certain positions, you have a certain number in there, and you cannot exceed that number.
I think Andy was saying, well, we wouldn't run out of money like right now, you know, it's like, you could, she could hire two or three people, and, and she could wait a month or two to get approved by a council.
Oh, exactly.
Is that your question, or no?
Yeah.
So I don't see why I'd argue.
That's why I'm wondering, that's why I'm wondering if we need to just take that number down, so, if she's always low six, let's take that number down six, and then if she needs an additional people or finds those people, then she has to come in front of us, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
And this was one of the things, too, we, I forgot to talk about at the beginning of the meetings, department heads, um. Are going to Joy, they're putting in, I wanna do an additional, we talked about this, I think, at the last meeting, we would like them first to talk to the auditors, um, I mean, they're a great resource to say, hey, wait a minute, you know, you can transfer this, you can do this, before it gets to us. And, or, you know, they hear about it, and then they're like, well, wait a minute, you got this much in this account, or we asked, oh, hey, how much do you have in this account, why don't you take it out of this account, I mean, they could be the buffer between a lot of, you know, a lot of good questions and answers before it gets to us, so, I don't know how we wanna do that, just, you know. As a council, say, hey, department heads, please go to the auditor, and then go to Joy, or Joy, then send it back to the auditor, whatever, but.
Well, and that's the other thing that we wanted to bring to your attention, is far too often, by time we get the information, it's, uh, too late for us to do any research, because she's given us up to the deadline for publication, and so we can't change publication, and if Joy doesn't give it to us within enough time to do some research, it's gonna stay as submitted. Under the publication, and then if we find something else, then you're gonna have to table it, which is gonna take a lot more time.
So the department has to come to you first.
Well, are they just copying us on the same?
Joy forwarding, depending on further forward.
That would be a suggestion, or just copy us when they send it to her.
Mm-hmm.
Copy her, both get it at the same time.
Okay, yeah, because then, at least that way, you know, she can put it on, saying that she got it, but we can still have it in enough time that we could do the research and say, hey, you go, maybe go reach out to that department, say, hey, how about this, this, or this? Get it changed before we go advertise, maybe advertise it as a transfer instead, and then, or, you know, you don't have to advertise it at that point, but you get what I'm saying, it's just, it's more of a, it, it just.
It gets all. Three lines of nonsense, so that we're prepared to.
Everybody understands what he wants, and then you can do your research and go back out to him, and then, you say, hey, if you can do this, do this, they get a pump, they need it, and then everybody's good, so, it makes sense to me, can you. Can you call this for foundation, nine one one foundation budget again, that money, where that money come from?
The foundation comes out of the foundation, that's all that's up for nine one one, that's all, that's.
The capital money.
Yeah, that, that interest at five point, five, five point six.
This is what their share.
That's their share.
I think they give what, three point five percent of the investment can go into the foundation every year, and the rest goes back into the principal.
Yeah, and so.
But she actually spends about seven hundred and forty thousand dollars for nine one one, that's why we're saying, if we can move part of that back up to surcharge, to cover some of those costs, that leaves a little bit more for insurance.
Cause right now, we're always, we're always topped out on our foundation, right, we're, we're like always right to the, right to the limit, right, on foundation, probably. But so we've seen.
Well, that's why it surprised me that she actually wanted additional money from the foundation, because we've already had it allocated.
So what happens to the unexpended, like, say, from twenty-three M to the unexpended, one hundred and sixty-three thousand, just?
It's just.
So, it's a, a budget, and, and this is where cash versus appropriation.
And that's where, Brian, I told you this, since the time I've had this job, I deal with cash, I deal with money in, money out, and it's so hard for me to understand, it's kind of a big pile, everybody budgets, and it just comes out, you know, so it's.
And so, I, I just think in some of these, they've, you know, just been, you know, year after year, hey, you know, we'll throw, you know, this amount in, or they'll put, you know, no change, and so, we take it as, fine, no change is a good thing, but. A lot of these that we're finding, that never have any changes, they never ever spend anywhere close to what they're budgeted, you know, they're, it.
It's like a safety net for them, they just assume it's gonna be there whether they spend it or not, the problem is they're tying up the money.
And then they go transfer, yeah, and then.
It's appropriated, it's not there.
Yeah, and then they transfer it within line items to, you know, play their shell games, so to speak, at the end of the year, throughout the year, and, you know. And, and again, I'm not saying it's for hourly, I'm not saying it's for overtime, I'm not saying it's for whatever, but, you know, too many people, and you just see the same things over and over again, you just, like, why don't we just budget it that way, then?
Right, and I understand having a, whatever.
A little cushion, yeah.
You know, if you have a hundred thousand dollar budget, half fifteen, twenty thousand, or whatever, fifteen thousand is a cushion, I get that, but if you have, your budget's a hundred, you're only, you know, every year you're only spending sixty or fifty. You know, or, it's.
Yeah, and, and again, we also, we, we don't wanna put the mindset into everyone of, well, shit, I gotta go spend it, otherwise, you know, the council and the auditor's office is gonna take it away from me.
Right.
Like, that's not what we're looking at, we're looking at your historical, reoccurring, time over time costs, and, you know, we know that your printer's gonna cost X, we know that your office supplies are gonna cost Y, we know that. Your training and education is gonna cause Z, like, between that and your salaries, FICA and PERF and all the other stuff, we understand what your budget should be, okay, if you have some ideas about buying a new printer, or some ideas about buying a new whatever, like, throw those in there, we'll talk about those things, but. Capital outlay, or is that just part of the supplies? Oh, capital outlay is part of the, it's the.
Four thousand.
It's the, and part of the budget, so, yeah, I mean. Like, the one time, cause they don't give you a printer every year. No, no, and, and so.
And some of it goes through IT, too, if it comes out of the budget.
Correct, and, and so it just depends on, again, how everything is kinda pieced together, cause, like, the way we're looking at it, and all the, to what I call the county funds, the funds that we share. You know, lit, we share amongst each other, foundation, we share amongst each other, CCD, you know, those ones, those need to be cleaned up, and once we clean those up, I think that we're gonna find that we have enough to budget ITs, you know, five-year replacement plan, I think that we'll have enough. To have, you know, motor vehicles, you know, in there to where, you know, any departments, whatever pops up, you know, you can get them a new vehicle, but it just comes with cleaning all those funds up and putting everything in the right places, and I think. Once we get that kinda stuff figured out, get some people, some departments, take on a little bit, you know, of some stuff that shouldn't be in some of those, what I call county funds, then, then I think it paints a better picture of what we, you know, actually can use.
Actually use. Wouldn't this actually, I mean, and, and help, help us get a better stash out of where we really are as a county at the end of the year, we know what we have, we know whatever reserve money you can actually give, you know, maybe another percent raise that you thought maybe you couldn't, because it's in budgets that we don't know, I mean, am I looking at that?
No, no, and, and again, si, I mean, to me, the general fund, while it's always strained, like, the general fund always pretty much gets eaten up.
Right.
You know, there's no unallocated general fund, like, even at the end of the year, say you end with fifteen million, or twenty million, or ten million, that, that amount of money has to get you until the next settlement, so I never consider it as unallocated anything, like. Yes, we may have ended the year with that, but that has to get us through this next half, so.
I actually asked Ryan, I saw something that shows, right now, the general fund, uh, in the red million dollars.
Correct.
But, but, June eighth, we're gonna be getting a payment, so now that comes, everyone looks, oh, we got thirty million dollars, hey, we're.
But then I'll stick another six months.
That's gonna get you through the other six months, so.
So, a, and that, and that's where I think, you know, sometimes there may be a misconception where, while we may end the year, more money each year, more money each year, more money each year, that's just also meaning that come settlement time, you know. Look at, i- if you look at this exact time, you just said we're negative a million.
Very much, yeah.
Okay, if you go back two years and look at this exact time, we're negative four and a half million.
Right.
So, we've gotten three and a half million, three million dollars better, you know, but that keeps coming over time, over time, over time, it's never.
See, in business, in business, I look at it this way, it's almost like you're receivables and retention, if this was a business, if we stop today, it seems to be a government, or, you know, at the end of the year, yeah, we have fifteen million dollars left over, cause we don't have to worry about getting through the next six months, but we always are gonna have to worry about getting through the next six months.
Correct.
Exactly.
So, that fifteen or whatever million dollars that we have, that's what gets us through.
Yeah, it, it's never a profit, it, it, it's just, now, okay, next year, we don't have quite as big of it, you know, i- if it keeps building up, and it keeps going up, which is a good thing, you guys have, again, when I was here the first time, that was always at zero, oh, so, the fact that it's at eleven million, thirteen million, fifteen million, you know, whatever it's gonna be. Is absolutely amazing, but we also can't think of it as, at the end of the year, we got fifteen million dollars to spend.
Yeah, we can spend it, or if we don't, right.
You know.
Speaking of, we're talking about the expended and, uh, the unexpended, and the fact that we've worked for three years, if you look at the twenty twenty-two budget for nine one one, they actually had five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars they did not spend in twenty twenty-two.
Will that go back to general fund?
No.
No, that goes in their surcharge, cause that's a surcharge.
And thi, and this is the thing.
We could say that, so, so, and you knew some kind of a new piece of, I mean, that's where Shy was.
And when you look at twenty twenty-three, they, they had unexpended four hundred and seventy thousand, so I'm just telling you, the reason we're bringing this to your attention is because the last three years, here's twenty twenty-three here, the last three years, there's been a, a, a larger amount. That has been unexpended, that's why we're thinking, instead of having it sit in that budget and lock up, even though it's a surcharge, move some other things over to take care of.
So the surcharge can actually pay for some of the stuff that is a foundation payment.
Exactly, and here is, uh, the money for the cash flow, they bring in about a hundred and forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and five dollars a month, which, uh, totals about one million, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars.
Nine one brings it?
Nine one one brings it.
What's that, what's that for?
That's the surcharge they bring in.
That's it? How much they bring in, say?
Uh, monthly, they bring in one forty-seven, eight oh five.
Is that surcharge tapped out? I mean, it's not tapped out.
What's it on the phones and?
Is it the limit, or can it be, can it go?
I still think it's that dollar fifty or whatever.
Who sets the surcharge, that, that's, Dave or?
States.
Yeah, there's, there's a, right?
Yeah.
There's a range.
Oh, really?
It depends on, um, it depends, if I'm not wrong, it depends on the population, and then it's charged by phone.
Oh, we can raise it anymore?
Yeah, I don't know if we can, either.
I think Dave said last, he checked, and it's a dollars per device that can make a call tonight.
In this, in her overtime, the two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand overtime, but that's because you have those open positions, and when you're doing overtime, some of them, you're paying at time and a half, so, some of these people make fifty-eight thousand dollars, you know, um, if you look at the.
Are they on an eight-hour shift?
No, they have eleven-hour shifts. They have eleven-hour shifts.
Oh. Is that helping with overtime? Why are they on a eleven?
Is that helping with overtime? Why are they on eleven-hour shifts? You're too powerful, I'm asking, you know?
It was set up with the commissioners when they went. We didn't know what the sheriff's police went to the twelve hours, until late. Well, we've sort of taken care of that now.
Are they getting the day for day yet, or?
Oh, they got day for day, yeah, they got the extra forty hours. Um, when we, when we just.
No, it should, in theory, so.
But they just ask for overtime, so.
I just, yeah, that was for the transport, wasn't it?
But they were talking about part-time transfer from the jail, and they've always, I didn't understand the overtime because it all actually, well, it happens during the process. Normally, the transport would be from a location, locations, usually the officer that takes them, not jail transport. Jail transport's when it's coming from the courts. So I wasn't, I, but I wasn't gonna ask.
Or they're going to another facility.
Right, but I wasn't going to ask.
I don't know, I, part-time, yeah, that was interesting. Um, but as far as the officer, the merit officer, that should, that should.
I would hope so, because it's right now at a hundred eighty thousand, but we just gave them twenty-five thousand, so we have two hundred thousand for that most.
So, yeah, it's, yeah, I mean, there, there are things that have been, like you said, I mean, they just got, so we're gonna have to wait and see about those things, but it's more of these reoccurring things that are just happening.
Can I ask a question, Ryan?
Yep.
If I'm off base, tell me. Where this could be dangerous is if, if, if you're, say you had a whole new council, everybody got kicked out and they have a whole new council, right? And we got this budget down, say, E nine one one, so we got stuff out of foundation and we take those six people, and we're, we're very, very, very skinny. That, that, that gives us kinda more money, overall as a whole. Um, you have to be careful that you don't take that money and spend it on something that's gonna be, um,
A recurring.
A recurring expense. Now, you can maybe do some of that stuff for items like leading's money for IT, great, cause we can get through that, but that's where you could kinda get caught up a little bit, and if you use that money for something else, or a recurring expense, and then when, when she was adding by six people, I just found six people, and be like, oh, we kinda use that money.
It's a surcharge, and we're not gonna use it because that's earmark for her home, for her home.
Okay, I see where you're going.
That's because, but the point is, while it's there,
Yeah, so.
Then we can have a better look at what's there and what's not being spent, so you're sitting there and transferring it out to overtime or whatever.
Yeah, so no matter what, when her revenues come in, like, you know, her budget may show a certain thing, but her revenues are gonna continue to come in no matter what, and they're only gonna go to her fund.
Correct, okay, that's.
Yeah.
Exactly, yeah.
So, yeah, no, I mean, if it was like a.
So what we're trying to do is put some of this outside stuff into the surcharge to fill up the.
To leave us, have some leeway with some of the other.
Fill the glass up, like, to give you leeway for other stuff.
Yeah.
I got you.
You know, cause I, I'm almost, I almost now look at the foundation and lit and some of these as like a general fund. You know, and if you look at it as a general fund that can help everyone, you know, then you start looking at their, you know, their funny funds and, um, can you pop this into your funny fund, hey, can you move this? You know, cause if everyone just does a little bit here or there, then all of a sudden we take, you know, the stress off of, you know, lit for two years, we take stress off of these ones for two years, and then you kinda build those ones up, and then you can say, do you need a coroner's new van? Yes, you do, cool, go for it. And, you know, it, it, it doesn't matter who the ask is, you know, or what it is, you finally have the ability, you know, if it's paving, if it's CCMP, whatever it is, we have the money there to actually do these things, instead of just every single year going, all right, where the hell are we gonna find this million and a half dollars?
Or like today, we met with, uh, uh, commissioners with reference to the health insurance, okay? So even after our rebates, we're still short two point two, two point three million. Okay, so when you look at that, it's not because anybody did anything wrong, it's been since a, a couple of years back that it's not been properly, fully funded. And what happens now, it's weird, as of this point in time, if we make it through July, we'll be lucky if we don't get that two point two million. Now, we've gotta find two point two million. Good, bad, or indifferent, because we can't let our employees do without the health insurance.
Right.
It's a priority. So if we move some of this over, it's not gonna cover the two point two, but it will leave some more in the foundation. Just like we have, we talked about the funny funds, you know, the sheriff department has eighteen different funny funds. There's no reason they can't cover some of the stuff in their commissary, they, they're buying motorcycles out of it, they bought the hats out of it. But this should be used for jail purposes, which will reduce the general fund and assets if you start moving the groceries there. They're talking about a four point two increase in groceries, okay? Already, this is before we even start budgets, they want two new bomb trucks and two new people. Their total request is one point two million before we've even gotten to the budgets, and we're not gonna make much more than one point two million in, increase. So now we've gotta worry about other things that we have to pay.
They asked me to create a budget, I'm gonna be careful about the department heads. And that's what they used to call it at the city, you gotta start getting creative with.
Well, that's why we decided to go through the budgets individually, find out what's not been expended.
Now, again, his ask, he had three and a half percent raises as well for every single.
Employee.
Way, so, you know, assuming that we put it as a, you know, freeze, you know, those, that amount would come out of his one point two asks, that would be a huge portion of it, but, you know, at the same time, like.
But that's when I, when we need to.
No, that, that, that's what I'm saying, like, you know, that, that's, granted, he's the biggest department, but, you know, he also can't eat up all new monies every single year, cause, I mean, yes, he always can, you know, i- it's just the biggest department. Like, you know, we can always up them one point two million every year, and, you know, probably not ever be enough, but at the end of the day, that's not how we have to function.
At the end of the day too, we got healthcare two point two, we have these, you know, he's gonna be looking for some big asks.
Who's that?
Lee children.
I too, yeah.
I mean, I was just talking to this gentleman Ben, he's like, hey, we need to get office three sixty-five, get out of this, then we can have, I guess, Teams meetings instead of this, we pay a lot for Zoomers, times out, I mean, there's lots of things that, you know, there's a lot of asks out there, and I think a lot of asks, honestly, are probably good asks, but it's just a matter of paying for them, right?
How many do you think would take the auditor, your office, to kinda get a gauge on? We talk about these funds are available, we talk about IT needs, we talk about paving, JMo and Poleric and what they're asking. Let's just say we're able to have something, a package, and say, we can, we can do the paving, we can do some of the, the ITs, uh, trying to go with other insurance, and this is May, by July?
July first, the budgets are due. On July first, prior to, we were gonna send up, cause we, like I said, we met with the commissioners, or the commissioner, um, Scott this morning, and what we're gonna do is send out a letter asking them for their needs and wants, or wishes, they're not gonna get both.
I already told Jeff Ben, I said, dude, at this point, for me, it's needs.
So that, we thought we would send that out, the budgets are due the first, then what we would do is look at the unexpended, make recommendations and find out what we have to work with and what.
I was gonna say after, once that's done, then was when we could maybe look, cause right now, what I'm, you know, I don't know, two of you think of the rest of the council is that, I mean, right now, it's like, okay, we're not even gonna talk about raises at this point.
At this company.
Realistically, Mike, I think the date you're looking for would be mid-July.
So, yeah, but once we get all this other package together and we get a better handle on it, then maybe, and I don't know if that letter should even say, we're, this is what we're doing and why we're doing it. Um, I don't know if we would include in there at this point, I'm not sure, but, you know, any type of increase in salary is dependent on balancing and managing these funds, and we're asking you as department heads to do your due diligence, sharpen your pencils, give, give this information back to you, and then possibly start discussing, okay, what can we do for increases? Is there any way we can hire another cop? I don't know, but right now, it's like, I don't even think.
Well, he stopped that cop grant, and he, he did get a hundred and twenty-five thousand in cop grants.
Yeah, is that a matching grant? Or?
Uh, no.
No.
It's a hundred percent?
And he got four hundred thousand in the tech grant.
When do we have to pick that up? Three years?
Um, it's, it's a three-year.
Yeah, it's a hundred and twenty.
So we have to plan that after three years, we're gonna have another full-time salary.
Now we've got the prosecutors too, where they have the victim's assistance, where they increase their salaries substantially, but don't have the money in the grant, so now they want general fund to cover it.
They forgot to increase.
About thirty thousand dollars.
Right, what was this?
They, they have victim's assistance and they have a grant.
Uh-huh.
But they increase the salaries.